Welcome, everybody. Before the forum actually starts and the questions are, the candidates get the questions, I just wanted to say a couple of things. First thing I'd like to say is thank you for coming. Having people here in person is kind of what we do and how we do it best. So I'm Nina Handchett. I am the Executive Director of the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce who presents this forum. We've done it, historically, we've done it for some wonderful reason and we keep doing it. So hopefully you enjoy it and you'll walk away better informed than you are right now. So I'd like to introduce Teddy Spain. Stand up if you would, Teddy. Teddy's our Board Vice President and she's going to be the co-moderator and as well as the co-timekeeper. Thank you for doing that. So I'd like to, I'd like to introduce Bob Cox and thank him for having us be able to use his facility and set it up and I'd like him to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please place your hand over your heart and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. This is the Cloverdale Veterans Building managed by the American Legion Post 293. Can you not, oh, managed by Post 293, thanks, Paul, keep me honest. And they're the ones responsible for everything, the sound system, the chairs, the tables, the letting us do this event here, pretty centrally located, accessible to our people. Thank you for doing that, much appreciated. And the other vets helped him too. This is not a one-person operation. Alan Fitch and Visual Story Media, Alan's doing the videography. It will be uploaded, it won't be livestreamed, but it'll be uploaded by end of day tomorrow to the city's YouTube site. So you can see it later and just see how well the candidates did. Thank you for doing it on short notice, Alan, by the way. So the candidates are going to be seated in alphabetical order by their last name and there'll be 10 questions and each of the candidates will be able to answer all the questions. They won't be directed to particular candidates. And I'm going to ask when you get seated here if it's okay if I call you by your first names rather than your last names. Appreciate that, thank you. So each candidate is going to have two minutes to introduce themselves to you. We're going to start with Trevor Ambrosini, that's why I say Trevor. And you can, this candidate, you can take, you can take your seats if you'd like to. I mean, it's got to happen sooner or later. So after Trevor introduces himself, each of you will have an opportunity to do that. And once that's done, then each candidate is going to answer the same question, starting with Trevor again. And then as we go through all the candidates, the next question will go to, in this case, Hannah. And then it'll go on down the row until everybody's had a chance to answer. Each candidate will have 90 seconds, a minute and a half, to answer the questions. And our time, we have a very, very advanced timekeeping system. So, so there's a, well, we're using, we're using our phones, but we also have the visual tools. So yellow will be presented to you when you have 30 seconds left. And then red is a stop sign, which means stop. Yeah, that, those are ancient, but they do the trick. At the conclusion of the forum, each of the candidates will have a one-minute wrap-up to maybe share things that they might not have had an opportunity to share with you or maybe further answer one of their questions or clarify it. So, so look forward to that. I just don't want to miss anything here. Do I, Teddy? Okay. 6:20, it's a little early, but that gives us a little bit more time. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, good. So question number one, directed to Trevor first.
Do I introduce myself first?
Oh.
Good morning, Nina.
You can ask the question, I was like thinking about it.
No. Well, you'll be thinking about it, and we'll know. Okay, yes, please take this time to introduce yourselves, two minutes.
Hello, everybody.
You're going to have to pass that down too, as you, okay, you have to share.
So I'm Trevor Ambrosini, I'm running for city council. I've been a citizen of Cloverdale for about 10 years now. When I first came down here, I was working construction for my dad, it was supposed to be a quick project, we were going to go home. But after spending some time in this community, I knew right away I wanted to make this my home. About five years ago, I was fortunate enough to open a business here, a coffee shop in town. Since opening the business, I got excellent community response and I tried to really involve myself in the community. And most people who would know me in the community would know me as the guy who goes to the coffee shop. But what's less known is I also do permit and design consultation for construction projects. And so I've worked with local governments all over Northern California, from the Bay Area to the Oregon border, it's a process I'm really familiar with. I believe with my kind of insight into working with government, never in government, but with government, and working closely within community circles, I hope that maybe provides some certain insight and perspective as a council member.
Will you talk into the microphone?
Oh, I am so sorry. I'll lean a little closer. But anyways, yeah, my perspective, working both in community circles and with the government, but never in the government, I hope to provide certain perspective as a candidate and also as a council member if I'm elected. So thank you guys so much.
I'm Hannah Gart and I'm excited to have this opportunity to represent Cloverdale. While I'm originally from Omaha, Nebraska, Sonoma County has been my home for 11 years and I proudly lived in Cloverdale for the past two. What drew me here and keeps me here is the beauty that's of our surroundings and the strength of this community. But beyond that, I see so much potential in what we can achieve together. As someone deeply committed to fostering connection, I believe in the power of collaboration. My goal is to ensure that every resident feels valued and has a voice. Cloverdale is a special place and we have the resources and talent to address the issues we face. I'm passionate about improving our downtown infrastructure and creating an energy that reflects the vibrancy of our community. Together, we can prioritize the projects that matter most, whether it's strengthening our local economy, promoting transparency, or fostering growth that benefits everyone. Ultimately, my candidacy is about partnership. I'm not just here to represent you, I'm here to work alongside you to shape Cloverdale's future. And I firmly believe that by working together, we can build a stronger, more connected Cloverdale. Thanks.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Can you not hear, Paul? Is that good? All right, I'll get it up in there. My name is Todd Lanz, I am running for reelection to the Cloverdale City Council. It has been an honor to serve the community where I have lived for over 47 years and where my wife and I have raised our children. In 2012, I was appointed to the Cloverdale School Board, where I served for eight years. During that time, I was able to help dig the district out of a financial deficit where they were being taken over by the state of California. When I left, they had smaller class sizes than ever, more staff, more programs, upgraded and efficient classrooms, new sports facilities, the first real classrooms built in over 60 years, as well as almost $3 million in their general fund. For the past four years, I have had the good fortune of successfully working with the community and staff to make progress on critical issues such as homelessness, public safety, infrastructure, parks and open spaces. For the last three years, my colleagues, colleagues on the city council have appointed me as mayor because of their faith in my ability to deliver results. Because of the hard work on our homeless committee and the outside-the-box thinking, our homeless count is the lowest in the county, with our point-in-time count showing an almost 75% decrease in our unhoused population. Our police department is operating at full capacity for the first time in a long time, with a recent increase to 10 officers, have a new officer in the academy, a new detective position, and a school resource officer. These additions to the police department have aided in solving crimes, crime prevention, and the ability to solve a 1982 cold case murder of a young girl. We have also added license plate reader cameras, which have helped solve several crimes in our city, including a catalytic converter theft ring that was wanted across the county. Under my supervision, Cloverdale has added many amenities to our parks, including new basketball courts, new pickleball courts, a dog park, brought life back to our river park, and added a pedestrian bridge, improved existing open space, and added a new open space area to our parks. I have listened to and heard what my community wants and needs. I will continue to push to make these things happen. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Lasky and I would like to thank you for considering me for the, for city council. With my experience as a project manager and business owner, I'd like to bring back more of our tax dollars to help with our aging infrastructure of Cloverdale. My one voice would be much stronger as all your voices as I contact our representatives to help in that effort. Renee and I have called Cloverdale our home for the past seven years, and with 35 years in Sonoma County, I am deeply committed to Cloverdale and its future. We have raised four kids here in Sonoma County who have all gone on to be productive members of society. Hillary's a hairstylist and owns a salon in Burlingame. Haley holds a master's degree and is currently employed with Cal Fire as an environmental scientist. My son Jared is a tasting room manager for one of the bigger wineries here in Sonoma County, and Jesse is a high school teacher in Oregon. My career spans over 40 years, encompassing a diverse range of experiences that equipped me with a comprehensive skill set. My experiences as an electrical contractor taught me the importance of deciphering and writing contracts, along with connecting those two wires in the right spot. This, along with my project management and communication skills, will be an asset to the city of Cloverdale and will guide my efforts and approach as a member of your city council. With the nonpartisan endorsement of the Sonoma County Alliance Political Action Committee and the North Coast Builders Exchange, I respectfully ask for your vote this November. Thank you.
Hello, Cloverdale friends and neighbors. My name is Andres Marquez. I was born in the Bay Area, I'm the owner of Symphonic Finishing, which is a painting and general contracting business I established in 2002. My wife Mary and I are homeowners in Cloverdale and we've been touched by the warmth of this community since moving here in 2023. We both quickly became involved in our town and running for city council is one way that I can give back to this community that has been so supportive and welcoming to both of us. As voters, what you might find valuable about me is the fact that I put my heart and complete focus into the work I do. I look forward to applying my personal philosophy of delivering quality work to this opportunity as a city council member in service of our community. I plan to listen carefully to both our elders, parents, and younger community members in an effort to achieve the results our community wants. My agenda is as follows: Work well with our existing leaders in city council to propel our city forward by using my focus and skill set. I'm a registered no-party preference candidate that genuinely wants to focus on strengthening Cloverdale. I thank the Veterans Memorial Building and also would like to thank the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce and all attendees here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I learned, I, I learned, I learned. Thank you, and I'm glad you had a chance to introduce yourselves. That was hit or miss. So the first question, Trevor.
Yes.
What do you believe is the role of the city council in our community?
I think primarily the role of the city council is to protect the Cloverdale identity. And when I say Cloverdale identity, I define that as a sense of communal independence. We're a very unique and independent community in the sense we all have different opinions and ideas, but at the end of the day, we all stick together as a community. And if we see Cloverdale grow, I don't want to see it change, I want to make sure that we keep that sense of communal independence. And I think as a council member, that would be my number one priority, is ensuring we keep that Cloverdale identity of communal independence.
Hannah, you're on.
I believe the job of a city council member is to listen to the community and to be their voice and to then work with the other city council members in trying to come up with the best plan of action to move forward and make those things happen for our community.
Todd, you're on.
The job of the city council is to be your voice. You guys choose five people to get the things done that you want in our town. We represent the entire community. There's 9,300 people here in our community, I believe, and actually there's about 12,000 total if you, if you calculate the unrepresented. We represent them as well. So we are here as your five to represent everyone. And when we listen, this is what gets the projects done. If you think about things like the pickleball court, that is not something that I would have thought off the top of my head. Listening to the, the community, we got it. Dog park, same situation. These are things that we heard. You think about, right now, we have Measure DD, it is on the ballot. That isn't there because I like taxes. That is there because the number one concern is our roads and infrastructure, and that is what I hear every week. So the reason we are here is to represent you and get you what you want. And that is my goal. Thank you.
Mark, it's your turn.
Well, I'd like to say, you know, when I'm with my friends and we're talking politics, it's finally, it's like, you know what, it's time to get off the couch and have a voice at the table of government. Where are your tax dollars going? You can read in the paper every single day and see the, basically it's taxation without representation. So with, like what Todd said, with Measure DD to get, I'm, for one, never for, for any more taxes. I'm against government spending, I think it's wasteful. But if we can get Measure DD passed here in Cloverdale, that money stays in Cloverdale. And I would reach out to the public, there's a citizens advisory board that goes along with that, so you can come up and say, hey, I want that money, your voice can be our voice, just like I said. My one voice will be all your voice at the table of government. So I'd like, that, the role of the, of the city council is to listen to the public and take action. And with that being said, it's, it's, for me, the goal is always to watch where my tax dollars are going and have a say in where my tax dollars are being spent. And that's why I'm sitting here tonight.
My main goal as city council member would be to be a conduit for the community, and that's all the community of Cloverdale. There's a lot of people that are engaged in government and a lot of people that aren't engaged, there's still voters and taxpayers in our community. I think everyone deserves to have their voice heard. And I also would be very engaged across the city in talking to people, making sure that everyone's voice and opinions are heard and get brought up to the city council to affect what goes on in our town. You know, one thing that I could bring to the city council again is my skill set on balancing budgets and finding ways that we can save money. And, you know, that doesn't mean necessarily cutting our quality of life, but ways that we can do things more efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. We're, okay, so that was question number one. Did anybody go overtime? No. Good, good job. We may have time for some extra questions in which, in that case. So the third, I'm sorry, the second question, I'm going to make this go really fast if I keep skipping. So I don't want to do that. Hannah, we start with you. And what previous or current community involvement have you had in Cloverdale or another city?
Well, I'll start with current. I am part of Rotary, which I just became a member, but I joined them because I was running the railroad station for a year and a half and bringing different events into town, like live music and karaoke. And Rotary came to me and wanted to host bingo there, so I got to know the people that were on the Cloverdale Rotary and really enjoyed their company and now have learned how much I can help not only the community, but all that Rotary does. I also, in the past, I, when I was in Healdsburg, I did a marketing, not necessarily just for tourism, a lot of the things were for the actual community, doing videos highlighting different events, different businesses in town. And that's something that I would like to do and share for the city of Cloverdale now that I am living here. And, yeah, I helped clean up the river the other day, too.
Which was awesome. I could not believe you guys got 30 yards of trash in an hour and a half along our own little river park area. That's amazing. It shows you what truly goes on out there and what it would look like if we didn't have the volunteers like Hannah and our Rotary crew and everybody else that stepped up and so think is, and the, or the, the riverkeeper, the Russian riverkeepers. So thank you, sorry. One of the things that I've been doing, obviously, is council. I've been doing this for four years, I've been your mayor for three. It takes 20 to 40 hours a week. This is not two meetings a month. This is an extremely big commitment, the phone never stops, the emails never stop. Along with the council, I am on many subcommittees like our Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee, our Homeless Subcommittee, I've been part of our Public Works Subcommittee. Before I was in these seats, I was on the PTA here for our school districts. I was the president of PTA and brought it back when it was going to go away. I was on the school board for eight years and currently on the Mayors and Council Members Association, I'm a, also on the Sonoma Clean Power Board. I've coached sports for approximately 19 years. I'm on the Cloverdale Ponytail League softball board, and I think that's all the committees that I am on at this moment. So, thank you.
That's my current involvement in town. Well, let's, let's roll into that. As, as I raised my kids in Windsor, I was involved heavily in coaching basketball for over 10 years. And as I look back and count the kids, it's, it was over 800 kids that I had mentored in the town of Windsor. And when you say, you know, what, what's your community involvement, and one of the biggest things that I could do for community and country is when I served in the Navy. So that's, that's kind of a big ask for anybody to, to take, take a leap of faith at 18 years old. And now, as I say, as I, as I roll into retirement, I, like I said, I want to get off the couch and get involved in making Cloverdale a place that we can call home. With that being said, my parents came here over 20 years ago, the original Dell Webbers, and my dad was right out of the gate volunteering at the Boys and Girls Club. And, you know, my sister's doing the same now with Champions. And I'm going to follow in that step and go one step further and be a voice for everybody as I get involved with city politics. Thank you.
My involvement in Cloverdale started before day one. Before I actually moved here, I became a member of the Chamber of Commerce, which I'm currently on the Board of Directors. Me and my wife are both members of the Cloverdale Kuanis, we served as board members, are now currently president-elect. I'm a Sculpture Trail volunteer, I volunteered my time to renew one of the sculptures in town. Also volunteer my time to work for Cloverdale Performing Arts Center as a set design and prop building. I'm also a business owner who, my clientele is based solely in Cloverdale at this moment. Many of my clients are here today. Hello. So I appreciate you and everyone in town, so this is another step I'm taking and enjoy this town so much. Thank you.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, I've been fortunate enough to have a business here in town for the last five years. And beyond that, like I mentioned, I work in permit and design consultation, that's mostly out of the area. But one thing I didn't mention is that back in 2020, I was able to start a nonprofit called the Ambrosini Charitable Event Foundation. We opened right at the beginning of COVID and I thought, oh, COVID, this will last a week or two. Obviously, that wasn't the case. The charity is set up, again, it's called the Ambrosini Charitable Event Foundation, so it's essentially a nonprofit set up just to host events for the community, Cloverdale specifically, and to work with other existing charities in the community to help them schedule and organize those events. So COVID did kind of stunt our growth, however, since then, I would say we've been able to host 20 or maybe 25 events, small events, free barbecues, things like that. And so that's another, you know, involvement I have in the community through that nonprofit.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to question number three. Todd, this is your question to start. Should residents living outside the city limits but in the 95425 zip code be allowed to vote for city council candidates and city issues, and why?
That is a question that we, no matter what we answer, it's not possible to make happen. I think that they should, however, it is only allowed to have the people within city limits vote. You don't pay for city taxes and you, but like when you're within a district, that's why you get to see a school district tax, because you're part of that district. But as a city, you are not part of the tax base on that, and so that is why it is directed the way it is. I wish that we did the whole district to vote, but that's not the way that the government has it set up, and that's above my pay grade.
Yeah, with that being said, with the urban growth boundary that we also are voting on, I would like to see people that live beyond, just beyond the city limits get annexed in, and then we'd have a bigger voting base with a lot of more taxes. So like Todd says, you know, we're, the hands of government are mostly tied. So, you know, as a council member, you can only do so much. The question's great, and people that live just beyond the stretches of the, of the city, sure, they pay taxes here on services, they come and support local businesses, and they almost feel like they're on an island themselves. So it'd be great to, you know, change the rules and the laws to bring them in and make them, you know, part of Cloverdale.
I believe, you know, nothing is impossible, you know, everything is negotiable. The residents that live without our, outside of our city limits do enjoy a lot of the resources that we have in here in town, including parks and sometimes, you know, the safety that they're provided in town by our police department. So one of the things that I would like to see and I could do as a city council member is pressure our county supervisor and the county to release more funds to us that we are already paying into. So that's part of one negotiation that we can use to get money back into our town.
So that sounds like it may be a difficult process to make happen, however, I would think they should be able to vote for no other reason than I would assume they consider themselves Cloverdaleans. They do contribute to our community, they do come here, they spend money at the local businesses, and so I deserve that, or I believe that they would also, should also deserve that, a voice.
I, again, agree, I feel like people that have Cloverdale on their address should be able to have a voice in town where they're voting. And I think that would be something that maybe we can do as much of our part as we can to let the people that can make the difference know and put it up for a vote at some point, hopefully.
Okay. Thank you. You're all very succinct. You're not getting very much work here, are you, Teddy?
[inaudible]
Okay. So, yeah, efficient, that's it. So, Mark, we're going to give the next question to you to start. What should be the city's top priorities and then why?
Well, right out the gate, the top priority for the city of Cloverdale should be water. And everybody should be engaged in thinking about the water, where it's coming from and what's happening upstream of Cloverdale. If you've been following along with the Potter Valley Project and what PG&E is doing, they have until actually January of '25 to file their paperwork with the government to basically decommission the dam. So we're looking for, like I say, when I get on, if I'm so lucky to get on, or whoever gets on the council should hit the gate running and go right to Jared Huffman and say, hey, you know, your, your, your priorities should be our, our community of, like you say, Caya, Hopland, Cloverdale, everybody who's downstream of the Potter Valley Project, without water there's no life. So that, that's, I believe, is the city priorities. Everything else is, is minutia if you don't have water. So I think that's the, the biggest priority, and then the next priority would be the aging infrastructure. Maintenance. Maintenance of all the city's buildings, structures. You can't keep going with deferred maintenance on anything. So, with that being said, the Measure DD, Teddy's telling me to stop. But I would encourage you to just follow up on that in your free time. Thank you.
City priorities, you know, as listed, you know, we have economic development, housing, water, homelessness, emergency preparedness, local hazard mitigation, urban growth boundary, you know, and balancing the budget. You know, based on the research that I've done and conversations that I've had, you know, increasing our water storage would be one of the priorities that we need to look at. And I think with all the other issues, it always comes down to budget. So, my priority is pushing forward, you know, pushing pressure on the county and even our state to bring more of our tax dollars back to Cloverdale.
So, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but it, again, I think it comes down to protecting Cloverdale's identity. And I've kind of built my campaign off of being a small business-first candidate. I'm sure we would all consider ourselves small business-first candidates. But that's one specific avenue of protecting the Cloverdale identity, specifically in the downtown area. I think the more support we can see from that, in that area from the community, the more unique we will continue to be.
Well, I agree with Mark that our water is definitely something that we need to look at, which I've been researching a lot lately to see what options that we have. I think building our local economy by doing more fundraising, seeing what events we can put in place in town that invite people from outside of town here to build up that financially. I think that bringing in more recreational activities for our kids and for the adults that live here, too, to bring our community together more so that we can have more conversations about what we can do and how we can make things happen.
When you're in a time like we are right now in our economy with high inflation, everything's really tight, you're seeing the prices of products double and triple, and your budget starts going down, you have to prioritize. And so, with the city, we made a list of wants and needs. And the needs in Cloverdale are keeping the community safe, keeping you with water, and keeping you a sewer. Everything else is your need, or your want, sorry. Everything else is fluff. And it's the things that we enjoy, but it's not the main priorities. The Potter Valley Project, like Mark was talking about, is a major issue. I've been screaming about it for two years now. And we really need to start listening, reading, and researching and seeing what this is. Basically, the PG&E dam that blocks off the Eel River is going to be removed. Sorry, the Klamath. No, it's the Eel. I was right. It's the Eel River, and they're going to remove it next year. And that is the water supply that supplies Lake Pillsbury and supplies Lake Mendocino. Without Lake Mendocino, Cloverdale has no water. They're saying that Lake Mendocino will go dry multiple times a decade, and that means we will have no water here. Using the words of one of our higher politicians, he said, "The days of you having your own yard and gardens are over." And they're, these are the politicians that support this. They want it to go natural. You have over 90 species of animal that are going to go away. We will have no water here in Cloverdale in about 10 years if this project goes through. Thank you.
That doesn't sound like any fun. Sorry. Okay. Andres, this question is for you to start.
Okay.
None of you are off the hook, though. As you well know, as Cloverdale faces increasing costs for roads, infrastructure, and other essential services, how do you plan to bring in new revenue streams to support Cloverdale's growing needs without overburdening residents with taxes?
Well, revenue streams, I think the best way to do that is through developing our business here in Cloverdale. That's our local shops, boutiques, as well as our infrastructure with manufacturing, industrial, light and heavy industrial businesses, even our service businesses. So, one of the things we can do is spend our money in Cloverdale. As a Board of the Directors member with the Chamber of Commerce, one of my ideas is putting together a service directory where we can learn who our local contractors are. We can support contractors in Cloverdale who are more likely to spend money here in town, again, kind of generating the tax dollars. So, with, you know, other ideas about our businesses that are not here, that have left or empty storefronts, you know, trying to fill those, and ways that we can, you know, probably will be another question tonight, I'm guessing, but about having, you know, some type of penalties for the businesses that remain vacant and maybe even some incentives to get those businesses filled.
Thank you, Andres.
So, yeah, I obviously agree 100% with everything he just said. That was a great answer, so I don't have much to add to the business side of things. Beyond that, I would say, you know, setting up specific fundraisers with specific intentions. Like I mentioned, I set up my nonprofit, and a lot of times, the money we raise in that nonprofit, we try to give it to a specific cause. So, I think that's another way to kind of get the community to spend money towards things they want to see happen without really forcing it to come from everybody. It's more about passion at that point.
So, some alternative fundraising or getting more money for the town instead of increasing our taxes. I think there are more grants we can look into and write for. And then, solar generation for city properties is also another thing. These are all things that I feel like we could just do a little bit more research into. And do more community fundraising for the town, like you just brought up, maybe doing a festival or another street fair. Yeah, anyway.
So, the first thing we have to do is look at what brings people to other towns to create that money. And with that, in our area, the number one thing is tourism. And so, you have a lot of wineries and a lot of things that go on. And the best thing to do is to build the hotels and resorts that would support those types of things that would bring people from out of the area into Cloverdale. They'd come here, they'd spend their money, and then they'd leave. That's the best part about it. We use our Chamber of Commerce probably more than we give them money for.
That's true.
Nina, Savannah, Bree, they're an amazing group. You know, they work very hard. They have a huge social media presence. The weekend activities that they put on with their entire board and volunteer for is amazing. And if you look at what they've done with the Wine Walk, the Longest Table, July 4th, Winter Fest, the Car Show, you know, I've got a whole list here. The Light and Display Show, we're already talking about the Light and Display Show for December. You know, there's a lot that's going on. DD will bring a lot of money here because a lot of that money doesn't come out of your pockets. It comes out of the people that stop here to buy gas, and it comes from a lot of the corporations that use Cloverdale as their main spot for their business. So, the money from Measure DD would bring money to Cloverdale, but it wouldn't, the majority of it does not come out of the normal person's pocket. And we're talking like over 65%, I believe is the number of, percentage of the money will come out of other people's pockets and the people that come here to buy gas and things like that and then leave. So, thank you.
Yeah, so, with that being said, the Measure DD, I think it's projected to bring in $1.6 million into the coffers of Cloverdale. Like Todd says, that money's going to stay here, and we will have, it's not going to the county, it's not going to the state, it's not going to the feds. That's going to be money that Cloverdale can use for infrastructure. Upgrade all of our systems, everything that we need. And then, to, it's like talking about, what else can we do to get revenue? Obviously, I don't like more taxes, and I don't like paying anything, but if you go anywhere in any other city, pretty much, what do they have in the streets? They have parking meters. And those are just the silent, the silent money revenue generators. I don't think we're there yet, but it's one of those things that, how does a city survive if you don't have money? You know, we're not doing bake sales. That's just not going to happen, right? Another probably controversial thing is if you want to know what the community's doing, look on Facebook. And every year, it's like, okay, we have people speeding. So, it's like, okay, Todd says we're getting more police department individuals. Well, I'd like to enhance that with a motorcycle officer to slow down the speeders by the high school and on the boulevard. And that's a continual revenue generator that we should probably look into. And then, everybody look in the rearview mirror and do the speed limit. Thank you.
So, you're on, Teddy. We're gonna, Teddy's gonna do the next five questions, and I'll be the timekeeper.
So, we're on question number six. Okay. So, we're going to start with you, Trevor. With the increasing uncertainty around water supply, especially given the potential removal of the Potter Valley Dam, did you already do this one?
No, it came up.
Okay. How would you ensure Cloverdale has sufficient water storage and sustainable resources to meet future demands while safeguarding our community against droughts and water shortages?
Right. So, again, that has been brought up, and it's obviously a very pressing issue and a very difficult one. I've been looking into it, and it's hard to find really clear, specific answers. And I don't know, like, where the city's at already with communication about those issues or with various departments of how to solve those problems. So, if it were to, you know, come in front of me right now, what step number one? I would be reach out to the Water Resource Control Board, to people I've had to work with in the past, and it can be difficult. However, it seems like, and I'm sure it's already happened, but it seems like that would be the proper first step to solve this issue.
I think that definitely trying to not have them build a dam would be the first thing. But then, also, I know that Healdsburg, Windsor, and part of Santa Rosa get some water from Lake Sonoma. I don't know if there's other resources that we might have in and around the area. And then, also, where we are storing it. I know that they are implementing a new tracking device on our water storage right now for town just to have it more up to date. But, and they're putting more tanks, and, but if we have more water stored, then we also have more water as well.
You know, before the Potter Valley Project came up, I was telling people that even in droughts, Cloverdale has enough water because there was enough water in the Russian River to supply us, as we were the head of the Russian River, basically. With this Potter Valley Project happening, that cuts us out. Our worst drought times, we had about 5% of the release, and that is what they are starting to do next year. So, our worst drought that we had a few years ago, that's going to be your norm. Okay? That's where we're at with that. I have spoken to many of our appointed people, Gore, Wood, Huffman. I've worked with Russian River Water Forum. I've worked with PG&E. I've called PG&E myself and spoken to the tops of PG&E. This is a very difficult one because you have not only your politicians, but you have one of your biggest businesses in California pushing to do this. It is a bad thing. It's going to take everyone's voice, and we will, I will continue to fight for you to keep the water here. You can't store enough. The only other option that we have is Lake Sonoma, like Hannah just stated. There is the Sonoma water that starts in Healdsburg and goes south, and we're the ones that aren't in it. And so, we would have to put a pipe in from the lake over to Cloverdale to make that happen. It would be a very difficult for us. However, there are easements that were put in place back in the 80s. And so, it is an option, but we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. And I don't know where Cloverdale's going to get that, no matter how many grants or fundraisers or anything that you do. So, we're going to have to really fight together on this.
So, a little bit more background on the Potter Valley Project. PG&E deemed that the dam was in need of $9 million worth of upkeep, and PG&E says it's just not worth it. We're going to shut it down, and we're done. So, if you remember, if you've been here long enough, that the, Santa Rosa piped all their wastewater back up to the geysers to revitalize the geysers. So, if we can do a pipe from Lake Sonoma to Cloverdale, that's an option. That's great. Jared Huffman, he has the Two Basin Proposal. You can go on his website and look at that. And how we get our water is when the, going through the dam, when it goes through the generators, the offshoot pipe that goes to feed Coyote Dam, which feeds Lake Mendocino, the offshoot water feeds the Russian River. So, it's a pipe one way or the other that would sustain Cloverdale. So, if you do your research, and there's a lot to it. It's not a five-minute or a two-minute answer here tonight, but there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes. And with that being said, with the aging infrastructure that we have here in Cloverdale, I know our wells need upkeep, and we need to look at that. And like I say, going back to the taxes, we need money to keep our aging infrastructure intact, so we're not looking for handouts from the government to sustain all of our citizens here in Cloverdale.
One thing that I would like to do is really, the issue's going to come down to storage and learn about how storage is, for water, is really done. I think that we can learn how to get it done the most efficient manner. That's one thing we're going to have to do. So, if we can do it and get our costs down, that's going to be one way that we can ensure that we have the best storage that we can accomplish with, really, in our budget. Another idea, again, is, you know, having wells in our public parks that would furnish enough water to water those areas. So, that's just one other idea about water. Thank you.
Okay. Next question, we're going to start with you, Hannah. What can the city do to encourage owners of vacant properties to get the buildings occupied and get vacant lots developed?
As far as the vacant properties downtown or the commercial properties, I think there was something brought up at one of the last city council meetings about having them, having the fire department come in and just check everything is, there's no gas leaks, there's nothing that's a hazard to our community. I think just having the doors open for even just a moment so that we can walk through. I also think it would be cool to do, like, an art showcase at them so that the community or potential renters could come in and see what the space is like. I think we could add on to the city of Cloverdale website, a listings page that has ideal candidates for the certain spaces that are available, and just keep the communication open with the people that own those buildings.
Cloverdale in the past has tried to be very generous to the business owners, even when their businesses are vacant. We are a lower-income town, and we try to be fair with everyone. As you know, there's a lot of buildings that some people don't care if they ever have a business in it. So, that, because of that, we have recently created a vacancy ordinance that we're working on. And with this, it's going to create fines for these people that own businesses that they don't ever let people habitate or have a business in. We do walkthroughs with the fire department and anybody else we can, with health inspectors, anything that we can do to try to rile them up a little bit, make them follow the city's rules. Our Community Development Director does a great job. He is on the phone every day calling these people. We push, the city council pushes, and the Community Development Director pushes and says, "Hey, Ken, we need you to do this to your building. Hey, Joe, we need you to do this to your building. Open the doors, clean up your mess," you know, whatever it is. I don't want to name anybody in particular. However, we all know there's a lot of them out there, and it is what it is. And I've been saying this for four years and probably 24 years, knowing some of the people on our council have been talking to the same business owners. It is what it is. You have to keep pushing. So, we try with our fire department, we try with our police department, we try with our health inspectors, and we make sure now with the ordinance that now it's going to bring money out of your pocket.
So, along with that being said, the, since the fire department here is such a small entity, they do not have a full-time inspector that goes around and does, you know, fire inspections on these buildings. So, going back to, you know, how do you enforce a business owner to do something? Well, with that being said, you can have the fire department go in and say, okay, well, if you're not going to have anything in these buildings, you're going to have to monitor the water and flow switches. You're going to have to have a monitoring system so you're vacant. You're gonna have to have a monitoring system so your vacant building, you know, catches fire, you're not setting the whole downtown on fire. And like Todd says, if they don't adhere to that, then, then there's fines. And, you know, we're small, we're, we're not a city that really likes to be, you know, like big government, we're gonna push our ideas on you. But for community and civic safety, those are the types of things that, that have to be enabled to get us to where we need to be. I mean, vacant lots is kind of the same thing. If you follow anything with construction, there's a lot of big developers with, that holding on to their money. It's an election year and nobody, and then interest rates are high, so a lot of developers aren't gonna open their checkbooks and get a construction loan to build. That's just not happening right now. So, and you, and you really can't force a property owner to do what you think you, they should do with, with their property. The only thing is, like I say, you can do a little bit of enforcement. I know there's, there's ordinances involved that if the weeds are too high, they gotta go and cut the weeds. So, yeah.
Some businesses have very specific reasons they've gone out of business, like lack of marketing or inability to find a customer base. The other reason is generally low foot traffic during the week. One thing that I think, that really I would like to do is encourage a lot of more companies and businesses to become members of the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber has a lot of ideas to help business, especially with social media, you know, develop customers outside of the area that would come here. That also creates foot traffic, you know, events put on by, you know, Friday Night Live, the Chamber events, this also creates, also the Citrus Fair, creates a lot of foot traffic that comes to our town. So again, events can help bring foot traffic, you know, and then also, you know, I agree with the vacancy taxes to encourage owners to sell or rent out vacant units to generate revenue for the local government. So, you know, I think the issue of this is the larger issue of creating the traffic and, and also helping businesses modernize. And if there's a vacancy in a business, maybe we can look at what type of business we want in our town and maybe do the legwork to reach out to those type of people that might want to come here and start their company. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with pretty much everything everyone just said. I don't have much to add. I think code enforcement is a great idea. I think the city ordinance could be a good idea. And then also too, reaching out to businesses, maybe not directly in the area, who would be, who would like to potentially open a business here in town, I think is also a great idea. So nothing really to add except thank you everybody for answering the question for me.
Oh, sorry. I was waiting for more. Okay, next question, Todd. We're gonna start with you. What is your position on Cloverdale's boundary proposition, ballot measure CC amending the urban growth boundary?
Not to act like this is a ridiculous presidential debate, but I want a quick follow-up. I've been working with somebody who is trying to put in a car wash and a lot next door where they're trying to also put in some homes. And so that's in negotiations right now. As for CC and the urban growth boundary, this started because an adult home on Cherry Creek couldn't do what they wanted to do through the county's zoning codes. And so they asked us if we could bring them into the city limits and into our urban growth boundary. Doing this would create, generate revenue for us because then we would get their taxes. It also spurred a lot of property owners along our west side to say, hey, we want into this because we want to be able to protect and preserve our properties and our hillsides and not have the county be able to dictate who builds there and how they build there. And so we looked at this, the, the current urban growth boundary is set at a 400-foot elevation, which is a meandering line through our hillside. We set it up with the property owners who would follow basically the top of the hills and it would allow the whole properties to be brought into Cloverdale and make it to where we can choose how we want things built in our, in our areas. It also gives us with our open space districts where we pay property taxes on those districts to the county, now we would pay ourselves. So we would be saving close to $100,000 a year in property taxes or, you know, between 50 and 100,000, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go too far over. But it'd save us money to do that if we brought everybody in on that hillside. And it has nothing to do with doubling the size of Cloverdale as the rumor stated.
Yeah, I would encourage everybody to look at measure CC and, and I personally gonna vote, vote yes on measure CC only because you have certain islands here in Cloverdale that are, that are not part of the city. And then if you can stretch your boundaries and control your extremities of the city so other people can't come in and just, you know, build whatever they want. Like everybody's saying here that we want to keep Cloverdale small. Well, this is one way we can do that and we have the power to do that by enacting measure CC. The urban growth boundary is, is a good thing. A lot of the other cities in Sonoma County have gone through the process. There's, there's obviously a process to go through with LACCO and everything, if you look that up. But yeah, measure CC's a good thing for Cloverdale and I encourage you to do your research on it. Thank you.
Seems like everyone is pro measure CC. We do have some of the most beautiful skyline in all of Sonoma County. We all want to preserve that, so we're all pro CC. I haven't really talked to many people that have been against it. Thank you.
Yeah, I also am pro. I, my understanding is it gives more power to Cloverdale and less to the county. So anytime something gives more power to Cloverdale and less to the county, I'll support it.
I also am pro CC. I think that it is, whatever decision is come up to what we could build there, everybody in Cloverdale gets a vote. So you still have a voice no matter what.
Okay. Next question, we're gonna start with you Mark. What is your position on ballot measure DD, which seeks a three-quarter cent sales tax increase?
As I stated earlier, I'm for one, against taxes because I think the government has no oversight and they're very wasteful in their spending with all of our money. But when you get a tax measure that's local and it's not really coming out of my pocket or your pocket, it's, it's almost gonna be like a transit occupancy tax where people are gonna come in, pay a little bit extra for their gasoline, leave that tax money and like Todd says, and go about their way. So that's kind of what we're looking for. And a three-quarter cent sales tax is not gonna burden, I, I don't think it's gonna burden any, any of us here in this room and beyond. Like I say, if the people come, they're gonna spend their money and go. And beyond that, if we can get, you know, you start talking about smart train, you start talking about tourism, you can get people to come to Cloverdale, drop that three-quarter cent sales tax into our coffers and the projected budget on that is like a one, 1.6 million dollars. That would help the city right off the bat. So like I said, I'm, I'm not for more taxes, but that, that seems to be a, a no-brainer here in Cloverdale. So I'm for measure DD.
Well, as a city council member, my job is to talk to the community and really do what's in the community's interest. You know, I love the idea of Cloverdale having more money. That's a great idea. This is one of the issues that I'm undecided on. I've talked to people and I'm getting a mixed reaction. So I would still like to continue having these conversations to make up my mind on what I would do as a council member. This measure's already on the ballot, so there's the chance of it not passing. If this measure doesn't pass, Cloverdale gets $0. As a council member, I would talk to the community and see what the community wants. If the community is, is for no tax, if the community's for quarter cent, half a cent, even a full cent, I would do what the community wants on this issue. So this is one of the things I would like to explore more. If it comes up in the future, I'm on the council member, I will talk to people of the community. And if there's another proposal that needs to be put, if this measure doesn't pass, I will work with the community and, and do what the community wants on this issue. Thank you.
So my opinion on all taxes is I will never support a tax for tax sake. And I do not believe this falls into that category. This is a tax with a purpose. I understand we have the million and a half dollar deficit and I know this will go towards that, as well as improve roads and infrastructure, things that we've talked about. So yes, I do support it.
This was one I was on the fence and I've also talked to a lot of people about and I have decided not to support it. Not because I don't think that our town needs more money and that we are in a deficit, but I just want to see the businesses that are here thrive and more businesses and invite the tourism and those people up here and see what we can make work instead of putting it all on the shoulders of the people that are here.
So measure DD, when you read it on your ballot, I'm, I'm the person that wrote the argument for it. This is a tax on retail. This is not a tax on your food. This is not a tax on your medications and things like that. This is something that you get from your gas, like I already said. It's things that you see people come in here from your tourists, from your large corporations, they are the majority of this. Everybody here, when they buy something out of town, you already pay this or you pay more, but you pay it to other cities. They benefit. Lakeport, Lakeport just put in a huge water park. Everybody asks me, how can they do that and Cloverdale can't have anything? Six years ago, they put in this tax to do it. That's why. That's how. We don't have that. We're the only place in the county that doesn't have one. There's a lot of talk about how this is a regressive tax. I don't believe that. I believe every single person should have skin in the game, no matter how little. You should pay for what you use because it helps you respect it. Now, let me put the numbers into perspective. A person that spends $100 a week in town on retail, if you spend that much, it'll cost you $39 a year more. That's the difference. It's not a lot of money. If, so if you're spending $50, well, now you're down to 1950. If you spend $200, well, now you're up to 78. It's, it's, it's all about how much you spend, how much you can afford out of your pocket already. If this doesn't pass, I want to first say this is not here to clean up a budget, but our budget's really, really tight. It's really thin. And we're gonna have to make even harder budget decisions. Cloverdale doesn't have the money with the inflation to keep going the way we are. And so if you like things like streetlights, those are the things that we have to look at even having them on because they cost us $200,000 a year to have streetlights on. You have to look at what the wants and the needs are, and that's what I talked about earlier. And that is the tough things that on a council, you're going to have to make those decisions and a lot of people won't like you for it.
Thank you. We're on our last question, but it looks like we have time left because you guys have been zipping through these. Thank you. So I have a few extra cards here with questions, so we'll go through a few of those, time permitting. Last question on our list here though, we're gonna start with you Andreas. What will you propose for the city budget if the three-quarter cent sales tax measure DD does not pass?
Look at ways that we can add to the efficiency of, of how we're running our town. You know, you don't want to sacrifice our way of life here. I have a great ability to find ways to cut budgets. It's, it's another set of eyes that we could have on our city council to, to do that. So that's what I would do. And if we're, if we're continuing to talk to the community and see if we want another tax measure in the future, if, if some, if people feel mixed about it, you know, it's, it's not all or nothing. Some people are kind of in between. So finding something that's gonna have an overwhelming support by the community if we put it on, I think that's what we need. And then, you know, other, other ways, get my eyes on, on things that we're spending our money on, find ways that we can do it more efficiently. And that would be my way to make up for some of that lost money as well as, again, pressure the county and state to get money that we're already paying to them. Thank you.
Well, without being a current council member and without looking at the budget right now, it'd be very difficult for me to say where exactly it can be trimmed. I'm sure those are conversations the council is having, which is again, why I support the tax. I trust that the council is running an efficient government. And so if they're saying this is as tight as it goes, then I try, I believe them. I think it'd be very hard to find areas where it's gonna be able to cut. And so I do hope the tax passes.
Well, we can, there are all the budgets online that you can go through, but I, I will not use the word festival again because I saw your hands fly up last time. But I think that there's a lot that we can do that invites, I, the word tourism is a word, but invites people that are in outside cities in and do a little bit more marketing outside of the city and outreach to see how we can bring more people in to enjoy what we already have. And like I mentioned before, there's a couple other more creative ways or grants or the solar thing to look into. But yeah, keep the conversation on all of that going.
I'll, I'll just start by saying it's not the end of the world if it doesn't pass. It's not a good thing for your town, but it's not the end of the world. When we have these times with these high inflation things going on right now, what do you do? When your paychecks run short, what do you do? You hunker down. And this is what we as a city have to do. I go over this budget weekly with the city manager. I go over it monthly at an admin and finance meeting. The things we're, we're gonna have to look at is the wants and needs, like I've said it twice now, this is the third time I'm gonna say it. Water, sewer, safety. The rest of it's extras. We have to close some of our parks, so it saves money. It'll save you money in, in your staff, it'll save you money in your water, it'll save you money in your power. If you have to turn off the streetlights, well, I'm sorry, but at 10 o'clock at night, the lights go off. You know, there, there's a lot of things that we might have to do. We have been searching through this budget to find ways to fix things. We recently came up with a pretty good one and I'm excited and I have to thank David Kelly for it. We found a way to get about $500,000 different in our budget that is gonna be in the positive. You look at our urban, urban growth boundary, make that pass. That's another six-figure number that's going to help. We've, we've got really close to balancing this budget and I am the canary in the coal mine. It's what I did at the school and I will continue to do so. And if, if it comes down to hard decisions, you guys know I can make them because I've already had to make some that some of you liked and some of you didn't. And we can start with the fireworks on that one, to mention one.
Yeah, if the, if the local sales tax doesn't pass, the first thing, like Todd says, it's not the end of the world, but to, to be sufficient, services would have to be cut because you're, you're, the city's still, the city is still gonna want to provide for a, an operating budget. And then if you, if you don't have the money, you just don't have the money. So you're gonna have to make cuts and those are, and those are tough things to do. So what, what do you do when you don't have the money? And it makes everybody complain, but you have to raise prices, right? So fees, permits, everything that, the city provides, those services are gonna have to go up. Nobody likes that, but like you say, if you look at the big picture, a three-quarter cent sales tax on $100 is not a lot of money. And it, it doesn't seem to be a problem when everybody goes out and patronizes other cities and you're paying that tax down the road. We should all start talking about paying it here and bringing it home so we're not having these conversations and having to put more tax measures on the ballot.
So we have time for some more. I'm gonna go in the order that Nina had these. Pardon me? Okay. We'll start with you Trevor. We're back at the top of the ticket here. Zoning. If you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
Zoning is something I've had to work with a few times in the past and off the top of my head, there is really nothing to change with it. I've had to work, I've had to have areas have their zoning changed and it was a long process, but not an impossible one. So I really, off the top of my head, there's nothing that I would necessarily change. Cloverdale's been a great city to work with as far as permitting and that kind of thing goes.
This is something that I've actually worked with myself, so I don't have a lot to say on the subject, other than, yeah.
Very simple. Growth. All, anything that's included with affordable housing, the state controls it. We can't talk about design, we can't talk about where, we can't talk about who's gonna buy it, who's gonna live there, anything that goes on. I have been threatened twice in four years by Governor Newsom and Rob Bonta with lawsuit for questioning the projects that were going on in town. Question about safety when they're put on the side of a highway. I have been threatened twice in four years by Governor Newsom and Rob Bonta with lawsuit for questioning the projects that were going on in town. Question about safety when they're put on the side of a highway and a train track and next to two lumber mills. Question about design and saying they don't have enough parking spots. Well, that doesn't matter. They give them even more incentives for building more houses and build them taller than what Cloverdale allows. Build more units than what they allow and not have to have parking spots for everyone. It's funny how that works. And then when you try to question it or just, you know, maybe talk about design or put in sidewalks and crosswalks so that the kids can get to school, they turn around and they threaten you with lawsuit. That is the zone that I would change. The fact that we can't control what goes on in Cloverdale and the state dictates it. And I use the word dictate very loosely.
Yeah, I think Cloverdale, as it stands right now, the zoning is pretty straightforward. Now that they've loosened the laws for like 80 units, I think the R3 and zoning laws, I think they're pretty loose already in Cloverdale. So I wouldn't say that we would need to change too much on zoning.
Well, you know, there's a lot to learn about this. One of the things I would like to see is more open space preserves. Really enjoy that. Kind of locks down, I think, our value as a town. So that's one thing that I would like to see more of. And I'm glad that we have the open space preserves that we do have in our town. It's one of the things I cherish greatly. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we'll start with you, Hannah. What three things would you do to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
Three things. I feel like we just need to drive more traffic here and to represent the people that have successful businesses and support them. And to get together as a community even more often. Now I lost a question. Do I need a third thing? And I don't know. If it comes back around, I'll think of a third thing.
So the first thing I would do to help us with our finances is double D. Sorry. It needs to pass. It's going to help us with all of our infrastructure and all of our roads and all of our public safety and our parks. And what that does is it relieves a little bit of pressure in that budget to give it back towards the rest of the needs in Cloverdale. The second thing I would do is I would find a way to get a hotel or resort or both here. I know there was a talk of the Edge Esmeralda, as they called it, the property on the south end of town. They have a resort that someone is trying to put on there. Wonderful project. The person's name is Devon. She's incredible. But she's the fourth person since I've been on this council that has tried this project. I'm hopeful, but not excited yet. That's how you make money. You bring in these nice resorts with conference centers and things like that, places that people want to go, walking, biking and hiking trails. One of the other things with our open spaces is I want to get more so that we can do more walking, hiking, biking and equestrian. If you've ever seen the parks in Windsor, they're great for that. Foothills Regional is phenomenal for that. That brings people here that makes them spend money. The last thing I want to do is I'm looking at ways to get us a sports park. I've tried this for a while. I've had a lot of properties on the hook and people ready to go, but it just never came through. So my goal is to get us a sports park that would have some type of RV parking and things for people to be able to do overnight. So that when you come there for, let's say, a softball tournament, your family can rent a spot there and do things like that. And so between that and things like bowling alleys and things like that in the sports park is what I'm kind of looking for. So thank you.
Well, the property taxes are the number one revenue generator for the city. We could go beyond that in code enforcement, fees, permits, permit costs. And once again, the local sales tax Measure DD would give us a good foothold. Once again, Measure M funds for the fiscal year '24, '25, Cloverdale is going to receive about $104,000. There's also money out there for grants and all government entities. And we should be aggressively going after those grants. But if you're familiar with grant writing, it's not as easy as it seems. The money's out there, but the hoops you have to jump through to get it. And we don't have somebody that can really dedicate full time to going after grant money. I'd like to see, obviously the budget's hurting, but if we had somebody who was a full-time grant writer, there'd be a lot more money flowing through Cloverdale. Going back to what Todd said earlier about the project out on Asti Road, the Department of Transportation has a program for grants for safe streets. And they're going to be giving out over $6 million here in the next two years. It'd be great to go after that kind of money. So there is money out there. It's just how do we get it to Cloverdale? And that's where I'd like to come in and, you know, get together with, to be your voice, go talk to James Gore, go talk to Jared Huffman and say, hey, this is what we need in Cloverdale. Let's make it happen.
So I agree with that. You know, some upward pressure on our county supervisor and state senator would be good. You know, also support and build up our local and small businesses. And then also, you know, to find additional ways that we can balance the budget. Anyone who has known me through my work and even the organizations I'm involved with knows that I'm relentless on efficiency and finding ways to keep costs down. So that's what I would be able to offer the city councils, an additional set of eyes to continue doing the work that they're doing. Thank you.
So number one, pass the 3/4 sales tax. Number two, promote our local businesses. And number three is crowdsourced fundraising for specific projects. And I'll give an example of that. I mentioned earlier, I had set up a nonprofit a few years ago. Well, the first thing I was going to do with that nonprofit was to raise money to build a dog park here in town. I had done site plans for it. I had events lined up to get that fundraising going. And this was, you know, no city cost whatsoever. When I presented it to the city, I was informed that's something that was already in the works. And so it kind of killed the whole project. But looking for, you know, crowdsourced funding for projects, I think is a great way to continue to drive money into the community. And again, it's based on passion, not off taxes.
Thank you, guys. I think Nina wants to take over now.
We had some questions submitted in advance that I wanted to take a minute to go through and add to our file folder.
So this is a question that was submitted to me after we put our questions together. So I'd like to start with Todd, you're on. Okay. Can you share the largest budget you have experienced managing and how that is relatable to the city's roughly $12 million budget?
I'm not going to talk about the Cloverdale budget. I'm going to talk about the school budget. It's different than a city budget because a city budget, you budget for the year in front of you. A school budget, you budget for three years in front of you and you have to guess. It is very, very difficult. And so I worked very hard on our school system's budget and took us from, like I said, a budget deficit to where we were getting taken over by the state. To where my first meeting I was at, they actually asked the school board, now I start saying council, the school board asked if they could buy a cake for the current, one of the current principals. And the representative from the state said, no. They said, you can't afford a cake. That's how bad they were. With this budget, this three years in advance, you have to guess what's going to happen. And we nailed it almost every year to the point that we were conservative enough that when I left, we had just under $3 million in the bank. So what you do is you use good theories, you hypothesize and you look at your past trends and you see where you're at. You're looking at all of your inflation rates. You're looking at CPI. You're looking at all the things that go on. And you say, okay, here's what we're going to do. So $12 million budgets, yes, I've done them. More than that through school districts and things over three years of time, I've done them.
So the city of Cloverdale's budget, like Todd says, he didn't want to talk about that, but it's $10 to $11 million. That's a lot of money. When I first started out as an electrical contractor, you know, a $20,000 job was huge. Then, you know, a $100,000 job was huge. Then a half a million dollar job was huge. And then you start compounding on, how do you manage that kind of money? Well, throughout my career, I've done up to, I'm currently doing a budget on a project that's $26 million. So it's a lot of money and you really have to be fiscally responsible to know where that money is going and how it's being spent. So when it comes to $10 million, heck, the job I'm running right now, just the material alone is $10 million. That doesn't even include the labor, the overhead and/or the profit. So do the numbers scare me? No, not really.
Good. You know, we're a city council. We have city managers. So there's a lot of us working together to, you know, make these big numbers relatable. One of the things that, you know, personally, you know, I'm a homeowner, also run a business and I work with clients. I identify value. I do heavy research on the process and materials used to accomplish a job. And that, you know, I can identify where you can save money, having knowledge about where and how you're spending your money and not just taking somebody's word for it or assuming that, oh, because somebody tells you that this is how it's done, that's the way it's done. You have to do the research and 100% know about it where you can also help even somebody who is, you know, building something for you. You can identify where you could also save more money. So that's really the way that I balance budgets. And, you know, for instance, taking a vacation. You know, I find ways to find the best flights, find all the connections, find the best places to stay. So again, I'm relentless on finding value. And that's the skill that I would bring to city council. Thank you.
Yeah, so prior to what I do now, where I just deal with kind of permit consultation and design, I used to be a project manager for a general contractor. So there was lots of multimillion dollar budgets. It's hard for me to say what was the highest. Somewhere between $3 and $5 million, I'd imagine. But when it comes to a general contractor and balancing those budgets, there's a lot of moving parts. Dozens of subcontractors, a lot of people and companies and materials that you're dealing with. And you're dealing with it on an almost minute by minute basis. And I'm happy to say that over the course of all those projects, none of them ever lost money.
As far as experiences with budgets, I have done some wedding coordination, which we all know that's a large budget. And then I worked with a production company as a producer in San Francisco for a little while for doing video production for commercials and things. If that's compared to being on city council and the budgets for a town, I don't know if events are going to be a large thing. So looking at money and being able to give the right amounts to the right people involved, I think is what we all do in life, in our homes and everything.
Thank you. I have a couple of transportation-related questions. And then you'll have an opportunity to do your one-minute wrap-ups, okay? We're doing really well. We've gotten through a lot of questions. Thank you for your succinctness and your moving it on when you need to. So this question has to do with SMART. Will we have representation on any committee or board to represent our town with SMART? Oh, I think it might be Mark. Sorry.
Yeah, I believe once you get elected to city council, you're appointed to a bunch of different commissions. And I believe Melanie is on the SMART train commission right now. So as she leaves, that position will be open for somebody to take control of.
Oh, that was the question.
Yeah, there's already something in place for SMART train representation for Cloverdale, yes.
With SMART train, yes, I'd like to understand why there are delays and get a commitment on a timeline. Thank you.
I didn't know that there was already a commission for the SMART train. I think that's awesome news. And if I am elected, that's something I would absolutely want to be involved in. I personally love the SMART train. I use it as much as I can. And not only that, but it would, you know, beyond just myself, it would be great for the city. It could, opportunity to bring so many people in. And not only that, but an opportunity for the citizens to leave town for a day and not have to worry about driving. So I am 100% in favor of the SMART train. And if I am elected, that is something I would absolutely try and be part of in any capacity.
I think that beyond just the person commissioned to that position, I think we can all work to fight to get that up here. Because I think it would benefit our community tremendously.
You've all heard the answer. We do have representation from the city council. And if I'm elected, I am looking forward to having a new person represent Cloverdale on the SMART board and on SDTA so that we can be more productive in town and have a better voice.
Okay, here's a second transportation question. What will you do to solve the problem of transportation for people who don't drive, can't drive, can't walk to the bus and don't have friends or family to offer them rides? We have no, we have no something. And... Oh, right, Uber, we don't. No Lyft, no Uber. Okay, well, that's good to know. Good. Call the Reva. Oh, no. No, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. We need help with this. That would be you, Andres.
Help with getting people and their needs met without transportation like Uber and deliveries. One of the things would be, you know, supporting the senior center. They do a lot to make sure that people in our town have what they need. You know, I think there's other ways you can, you know, get community involvement. During COVID, there was a lot of community organizations set up that was put together by the community where people would help their neighbors out. So one of those things, the way that CERT works is to make sure that we're all more responsible for our own neighborhoods. So if we get to know our neighbors, we're all neighbors here in this town. That's one way that we could help each other out. Thank you.
So it sounded like there was some confusion as to whether we do have Uber or we don't. So I would say step one would be really promote the fact that we do in fact have it. The more people who use it, the more drivers we'll get. And I think it would be great to see Uber have a larger presence in our town. And I think one way to do that is to really spread the word that we do have it.
I think that a lot of people feel like Cloverdale is out of the way. I know that Healdsburg too has a bad problem with getting Uber drivers and stuff late at night. I know that there is one gentleman, Woody, I think it was his name, that I have his number because he's not on the Uber app all the time. If you text him or give him a call, he'll come and pick you up. And there's another gentleman that I forget his name. But when I was managing the restaurant, I definitely worked to find some rides for people that needed it.
So Sonoma County Transit offers free buses out of Cloverdale. And they have a bus that comes up here every day, multiple times. And we can always, if you have problems with it, I've actually helped a young man here in town that he would just take the bus around town. He has developmental issues and he would just get on the bus and try to learn how to function in society. And he was getting kicked off the bus because he couldn't just ride it, they said. And so we work with Sonoma County Transit. And now this nice young man rides the bus every day. But what I'm getting at is they offer these services to everyone. And so if you're having issues, let your city know. Let us know they're having those problems because we can help with that. Your Chamber of Commerce is another good group that can always look to promoting things like Uber, promoting your church groups that offer volunteer services. Some of these nonprofits like La Familia Sana, they would probably be willing to start something like this. These are the things that if the question is out there to us or the problem is presented to us, we can come up with solutions.
So the Sonoma County Transit Agency, in fiscal year '23, they received $1,600,000 into their agency. So that's another type of area where as a council member, someone comes up to say, hey, you know, we need a little help with, you know, transportation. But beyond Uber, here's another government agency getting grant money. And is it getting funneled back to the citizens that need it? So that's kind of where my mindset is, to go after that money and go after those agencies that will help our citizens. Thank you.
This is third transportation sort of, oh, I'm sorry, did I lose track? So the question is, and Trevor, it's yours, how can the roads in Cloverdale be repaired? Or when can the roads in Cloverdale be repaired?
It sounds like everybody knows the answer. I believe there's a tax being proposed that should go towards that specifically. And so I think that that tax should be passed.
It's just allotting, the budgeting, and, you know, making that a priority.
When we leave here, I have signs for yes on DD and yes on CC in my truck. If anybody would like them for their yards, I have them for you. And that is how you get your roads and infrastructure fixed. We've waited 60 years, looking Tarm and Track, look all these places. Back in the 80s, they used to do one road a year. That's what they had money for. We have $208,000 budgeted for all of roads in Cloverdale. That's your striping, that's your employees, that's any maintenance that needs to go on, any sign that comes down. $208,000 doesn't get you anywhere. That is why we are proposing Double D, because all I ever hear is that we need to fix our roads and our infrastructure. I get videos from people. They'll send me two-minute videos showing me the potholes on their street. I get it. I'm hearing you. This is how you do it. The signs are in my truck. Please support Measure DD, and we'll do whatever we can to make sure we fix your roads.
So back in the day, the gas pumps used to have a little clicker at the top, and it showed how much, how many gallons went through that gas pump. And you could do simple math and say, wow. And quirky Mark did this back in Windsor one time, and I was like, there's a lot of money going back to, you know, Washington DC. It was, I think we had the Shell gas station, however many gas stations there was in Windsor. But anyway, I was like, I was astounded on how much money went back to Washington DC. So with that being said, if you've ever been back east and you've seen all the roads back there, they're immaculate. And you know why? Because you and I pay for that. And it's our representatives are supposed to grab that money and bring it back. Are they doing that? It doesn't look like they're doing that. So that's why we have to help ourselves and vote for Measure DD, unfortunately. We got to help ourselves.
Well, you know, roads were things that always traditionally got done. Currently, you know, we have some roads that have not been getting repaired for a long time. It seems like a long-time complaint for residents. And James Gore, our county supervisor, is getting things done for Sonoma County, as he has on his website. And one of his items is investing record sums in road repairs, more than any other county in California. So if that's the case, let's hold him accountable. Let's hold all our representatives accountable. Mike McGuire, got to hold him accountable. The state spends a lot of money on stuff. Why are we not getting what we need for our roads and have to put that on the back of our taxpayers? So the other thing we can do within our city is maybe invest in some equipment for our Parks and Rec Department to have the ability to repair the roads themselves. Not talking about fully redo a road, but, you know, fix some minor issues. You know, learning about proper materials and methods, I think, can help us find the right contractors to do the work and get it done most efficiently. Thank you.
Super. So thank you for your participation. We're now ready for the one-minute wrap-up. We'll start with you, Hannah.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I appreciate getting to know the people that come out and want their voices to be heard. Thank you, Nina, and everyone else. In closing, I want to emphasize that by nature, it would be impossible for me to live in a community and not be involved in its success. My commitment to Cloverdale runs deep because I believe in the potential of what we can achieve together. I'm dedicated to being your partner in creating a thriving, inclusive, and vibrant community where every voice is heard. I'm not just running for city council. I'm running to help the future of Cloverdale with you. That's my commitment, because when Cloverdale succeeds, we all succeed. And together, we can make it happen. Thank you, guys.
All right. So first, I want to make sure I thank Nina, Savannah, Teddy, Bree, and everybody in the chamber that put this event on. You guys did a phenomenal job. You gathered the questions, you did the hard work, and you stood up in front of everyone else, just like us, put on the monkey suits and asked the questions. I want to thank the Vets Hall and everyone involved with allowing us to be here tonight. It's been wonderful. It's perfect. It's not all stuffy and uncomfortable like it has been in the past. Next, I'd like to thank all of you guys that came here to listen to us, candidates. You know, I take time out of your day for politics. That's horrible. You know, it's not fun. It's, I think I'd rather have somebody pulling me by my ears down the hallway. However, I appreciate you guys being here because you're the reasons we're up here, is to support you. I have a 12-year proven track record of doing what is right for the entire community of Cloverdale. I've made the hard decisions, even ones that I didn't agree with. I work hard to preserve and protect our environment around us, whether it's the River Park to the hills, to grow responsibly, and all doing this while maintaining our small-town charm. If elected, I will continue to focus on the priorities of our community, and will make sure to keep Cloverdale the great little city that it is. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the chamber for hosting tonight. Teddy, you did a great job. Nina, congrats. You did an awesome, awesome job. The Vets Hall, thank you for having us here tonight as your guests. We really appreciate that. And I'd like to thank my other candidates, Trevor, Hannah, Todd, Andres, for stepping up for the city of Cloverdale. Like you say, it's not easy. You get the best of both worlds and you get the worst of that also. I'd like to thank the voting public for coming out and listening to everybody's opinions tonight. And hopefully you take that to the voting booth and make a great decision for the city of Cloverdale. And with that being said, I would hope you would consider Measure DD to help with the city's budget. Like I said, I'm not for any taxes that the government can't provide representation for, but this measure is written in such a way that it has accountability built into it, and your voice to see that all tax dollars are spent wisely for our city. If I'm elected, I look forward to working with the existing city council on current and future agenda items to move the city forward. With the endorsement of the nonpartisan Sonoma County Alliance Political Action Committee and the North Coast Builders Exchange, I humbly ask for your vote for this November. Thank you.
Thank you, Teddy. Thank you, Nina. To the Cloverdale Veterans Memorial Building, thank you, Bob. Thank everyone in attendance tonight and everyone watching on YouTube in the future. Part of my strategy as a city council member includes actively engaging in the community and listening to the needs of our town. Since moving to Cloverdale, me and my wife, my wife and I have been active in socializing with the community. And this will continue to play a key role in how I understand and focus on what matters most to the residents of Cloverdale. Today, based on many conversations with members of our community, these are some of the issues I like to focus on as a city council member. Increasing communication with our school district, identifying additional ways we can maximize our spending dollars in Cloverdale, getting involved with current work being done to support local businesses and ensure they thrive. I see an opportunity for our town to adopt a more of a respectful culture as it relates to our differences. I believe we have a lot more in common than we realize. I will lead by example to inspire the best of Cloverdale through individual actions and promoting a culture of mutual respect. We need to stick together more than we pick on each other. Thank you for this opportunity to put my ideas and energy into Cloverdale. I'm excited to see what we can accomplish together. Thank you.
So of course, thank you, everybody, so much for coming out. Thank you for the chamber for hosting the event, and thank you to the Vets Hall. This is our second forum we've done. I don't know if there are anymore. And so I appreciate the opportunity for this. And if there's any more, I look forward to those as well. However, I'm much more of a conversationalist. And a big part of my campaign has been people coming up to me in the street, having a conversation with me, and letting me know their thoughts. And so I just want to use this time to let anybody know, if you ever see me, under this suit, there's a lot of tattoos. I'm not hard to miss. And so if you ever see me, please, I encourage you, come up, have a conversation with me. Or you can also email me at ambrazini campaign@gmail.com. We can set up a meeting, whether a phone call or a sit-down. And since I'm the last person speaking, maybe can we give the chamber a hand, as well as the Vets Hall, for hosting this event?
So in conclusion, the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce thanks you on behalf of our business and our residential community for your interest in further, furthering, further serving our community. And we're grateful for your enthusiasm and your commitment. And best wishes to each and every one of you. And kind of leveraging on what Trevor said, do, you know, do little coffee things with people. And you'll, because everybody wants to know who you are, even if they're not here tonight. And again, tomorrow, it'll be up on the city's YouTube, and so it'll be here in its entirety. Thank you for that, Alan. Thank you for the, to the vets. Thank you to all of you for showing up and being involved. Thank you so much.